Thank you all for being here today and for attending and welcome to the Dallas City Council District 13 Candidate Forum. I'm Jeff Kittner with North Dallas Chamber. Normally, we would be hosting this event in person, but due to COVID-19, we've shifted to offering candidate forums virtually. Thank you all for your patience as we hopefully avoid any technical difficulties for this program. I think, as you all know, early voting starts on April 19, and we appreciate you all joining us today to learn more about the candidates for City Council District 13. Before we get started, I want to quickly recognize our co-sponsors for this program. We have quite a few. First is the Dallas Breakfast Group. Dallas Breakfast Group's mission is to increase participation by Dallas area business executives and civic leaders in local elections and local affairs. The Dallas Breakfast Group is the only business-focused organization in Dallas to host forums for members with candidates running for all Dallas elected positions. The Dallas Breakfast Group is represented by Margaret Kelleher and Margaret Hughes. Thanks to both of y'all. Our second co-sponsor is the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization who does not endorse any political party or candidate and encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The league serves Dallas County along with sister leagues in Irving and Richardson. And the league is represented by Chelsea Keller, Elizabeth Wally, and Diane Tazian. Welcome to all of y'all. Our third sponsor is the Friends of the Dallas Public Library, known as FODOPOL. Friends of Dallas Public Library works to promote the Dallas Public Library and its 30 branches as vibrant learning institutions in our community and support its mission to achieve excellence in the delivery of resources, services, and information to the Dallas community. Friends of Dallas Public Library is represented today by Mary Wolansky and Ken Benson, and I also serve on the board of that organization. Finally, Faith Commons promotes public discourse rooted in common values many face. Its programs encourage and inspire people of all faiths and none to participate in public life with mutual respect, hospitality, and generosity. And Faith Commons is represented by Nancy Caston. Thanks, Nancy. And finally, last but not least, the North Dallas Chamber of Commerce. That's us. Our mission is to make the city of Dallas the best place it can be to live, work, build a business, and raise a family. The Chamber is the influential advocate for business growth and a thriving community. In addition to taking advocacy positions on key issues facing our community, as Ken Malcolmson was referencing earlier, we also seek to drive voter engagement and awareness by hosting candidate forums like these. And these candidate forums are part of our Civics for Business series, which is sponsored by Encore and Iberia Bank. So that wraps it up on our sponsors. And before we get into the candidates and the rules, I want to give you all a little bit of background about District 13, which is a 23-mile district, a square mile district located in North Dallas. It's unusually shaped, taking up a large portion of north central and northwest Dallas, including many neighborhoods such as Preston Hollow, Preston Center, Hockaday, North Haven Park, Sparkman Estates, and Vicry Meadow. It's primarily residential with some pockets of commerce as well. Economically, District 13 is one of the highest-performing districts in the city with 7.58 jobs per acre compared to 5.28 citywide and a property tax base of almost 1.5 million per acre compared to about 550,000 citywide. Some recent developments in this district include the new public library at 8255 Park Lane in Vicry Meadow, the first Costco business center in Texas across the street at 8282 Park Lane. And of course, as many of you all know, District 13 was hit hard by the October 2019 tornado with assessed damage to District 13 at 1.12 billion. Finally, I think, as you all know, District 13 is notable for having traditionally the highest voter turnout percentage in the city with well over 10% of the voting age population participating in municipal elections compared to just around 6% citywide. In 2019, Councilmember Jennifer Gates, who I think is joining us today, received almost 9,000 votes, the most of any council candidate on the ballot outside of the mayor's race. And her challenger, Laura Miller, received 4,600 votes, which was actually the third-highest total of any non-mayor candidate. So District 13 has always been an engaged district and appreciate so many of you participating today. Finally, let me go over the rules again. These have all been provided to the candidates in advance, but we'll be using ballot order, which is Ryan Moore, Deion Bolonger Chapman, Gaye Donnell Willis, Leland Burke, and Max Smith as the sequence. Candidate one, which is Mr. Moore, will make the opening statement, and then we'll continue in sequence order. And then we'll start with the first question with candidate two, three, four, five, and then one. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Following the opening statements, we'll have a series of questions from the moderator as well as audience questions. And each candidate will have one minute to respond to those questions. If you're in the audience and you have a question, please post it in the Q and A or in the chat. For any question to be considered, it must be asked to all the candidates, not just to one or two, or it has to go to all five candidates. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our candidates. And our first speaker is Mr. Ryan Moore. So Ryan, you have two minutes. And I forgot to mention that Ken Benson will be doing the timekeeping. So if you hear the bell in the background, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Moore, and I am a tax attorney here in Dallas. Being so short on time, you can learn more about my background on my website, moreforDallas.com, and that way I can get straight to the point. I'm running to represent this district because I bring a fresh and tax-focused perspective to the issues that we face rather than the longstanding commitment to development-centric solutions. All of us took a different path to get here today. For some, serving on boards and commissions was a valuable way to learn about our local ordinances and processes at City Hall. But I'm ready to start on day one because of my years studying government, policy, and law by working in the practice area that is intimately tied to how our city functions. Taxation is how we fund all of our city services, and those funds come from you in the form of ever-increasing property taxes. How do we address that? A simple commitment to lowering rates can be a Band-Aid, but there are creative, long-lasting solutions. I understand the complexities involved and can articulate them when advocating core reform. More than that, creating affordable housing, developing our workforce, growing our economy, all challenges that can utilize tax-based strategy. Obviously, taxation doesn't answer every important question, but I will approach these differently as well. I wasn't born and raised here, and I find it very valuable because when I moved into the district, I saw the entire district, not just the parts with which I'm most familiar. I immediately recognized the need to incorporate voices and leaders from certain neighborhoods that currently don't have a seat at the table. It's also why my public safety strategy is comprehensive rather than reactionary. I believe that code enforcement, transportation, infrastructure maintenance, and importantly, joint projects with our neighboring districts are integral to a safer District 13. I entered this race because I heard you all wanting a different option than what you've had before, and I'm confident that you'll get that today.
Thank you very much. Next is Deion Bolonger Chapman.
Good morning, everyone. Hi, my name is Deion Bolonger Chapman, and I want to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running. I grew up here in Dallas all my life. I went to Booker T. Washington High School for the Performing and Visual Arts, and I like to mention that because it was a specialized school, and it was there that I was instilled with an appreciation for a collective goal. It's at the core of my being. I also like to mention it because I was the last graduating class from the original building. The facade is still there, and you should go check it out. I went to college at SFA, Stephen Foster State University, where I received my bachelor's in music education and conducting, and I stayed to receive a master's in music education and conducting as well. From there, I went on to teach. I've taught in Prosper, and I currently teach in Garland at Lakeview Centennial High School, where I am the head choir director and I'm the department chair for visual and performing arts. I lead a very active lifestyle. I'm still an avid performer in our community. In fact, I recently finished a tour singing with the Dallas Symphony Chorus, and I hope to join them again next season. I also sing as a cantor at Westminster Presbyterian Church located on Devonshire. I love what I do, and I know that our time on this planet matters. And I hope that you can see from listening to me that our time is well-spent when it's in the service of others. That's what I'm about. And I hope that after listening to me today, I can gain your support and your vote at the polls on May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Gaye Donnell Willis.
Hi, I'm Gaye Donnell Willis. I'm so excited to see some of my favorite groups coming together to put this forum together today. I am Public Safety Chair of the North Dallas Chamber. I'm an eight-year member of the Dallas Breakfast Group and a former board member of the Dallas Public Library, Friends of the Dallas Public Library. But why I'm running for the D-13 seat is because I am an experienced and effective leader. In my day job as president and CEO of the Turtle Creek Conservancy, that's a small business. I have P and L responsibility. I create a budget. I work with a board of directors. I work hard every day at building consensus, not only inside our organization, but I've done so at city council and at park board. And I know what it takes to get the eight votes needed to bring people together to move our city forward. I'm a trusted three-time appointee of Jennifer Staubach-Gates. I have served as her representative on the Vicry Meadow Tiff Board, where I saw firsthand some of the obstacles to create affordable housing and how we need to expand the tools in the toolbox to be able to make that happen. She appointed me to the 2017 Bond Committee. So I worked on critical facilities, our police and fire stations, our libraries, our arts and other city facilities. And this gave me an amazing perspective on the amount of deferred maintenance that our city faces and why it shouldn't be forced into a bond program, but rather we should grow our tax base so that our O and M can handle it. And then finally, I served on the Community Development Commission, where I helped make recommendations on how we would deploy into our community over $30 million in federal funding around everything from affordable housing to youth and senior programs, community courts, et cetera. I'm a member of the DI. I served on the DI SD 2020 Bond Committee because our schoolchildren today are our community and our workforce tomorrow. The parents they go home to need to be upskilled, and I'm a strong believer in workforce development. I'm a D-13 crime watch leader. And most importantly, my platform is about neighborhoods first, and that's where we bring all of this together. It's where you turn in your driveway at night. It is about public safety, streets and alleys that are what you deserve as a taxpayer and about growing our tax base in an inclusive way and also representing our entire district at City Hall. I think I have the skills and have demonstrated them in the community, and I bring that to this seat and to this race, and I would very much like your support.
Thank you very much. Next up is Leland Burke.
Thank you, Jeff. And I want to thank the North Dallas Chamber and all of the co-hosts for hosting this forum today. I am Leland Burke, and I've lived my entire life in District 13. I raised my three children here. I've started two successful businesses here. I'm president of my own Neighborhood Crime Patrol, my Homeowners Association, and I've served on numerous boards and commissions, including being appointed by my friend Jennifer Gates to the Northwest Highway and Preston Road Area Plan Advisory Task Force and the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission of the City of Dallas. I also serve on the UT Southwestern Board, the Safer Dallas, Better Dallas Board, the Dallas Museum of Art, the Dallas Opera, and the Texas Business Hall of Fame. I'm a member of the Dallas Assembly, and I'm a former board a board officer and member of the Oaklawn Committee, which, as many of you may know, reviews important zoning requests in the Oaklawn and Uptown Corridor of Dallas. I have a deep understanding of land use and zoning regulations throughout the city, and I believe this is an important experience to have in a diverse district such as ours. I've got a big heart for Dallas, but more importantly, I have 35 years of experience as a successful businessman. I co-founded First Independent National Bank and my own investment firm over 35 years ago. I've shepherded my businesses through challenging economic times and good times, and I believe this is the kind of experience we need now more than ever on the Dallas City Council. As a council member, I'll be working every day to promote smart growth, fight wasteful spending wherever I see it, protecting taxpayers, improving basic services like roads, parks, libraries. We need to expand affordable housing in Dallas and, of course, police and fire protection. I fully support our police, and I'll be working every day to ensure they have the resources they need to reduce crime because I know that economic growth and opportunity in our city begins and ends with public safety. And so, again, thank you to the North Dallas Chamber and all of your partners for hosting this forum.
Thank you. And last is Mr. Max Smith.
Thank you. My name is Max Smith. I'm a retired civil engineer. Lived in Dallas 47 years. I spent 20 of it in the construction business and about 20 more managing multimillion-dollar construction projects for Dallas Area Rapid Transit, the biggest one being something over $400 million. I'm familiar with big budgets and know how to look at them. I'm also familiar with the need to be efficient and to cut costs because of my business experience. I'm running primarily because we're overtaxed. Our tax rate is a third higher than Houston and San Antonio, 77.6 cents per hundred dollars versus Houston and San Antonio at 56, and Austin is at 45. Our taxes have been going up because our property valuation's been going up about 7% a year, every year for at least 10 years, where our incomes have been going up at about 3% a year. And it's resulting in a big discrepancy. The city's budget has been advancing a lot faster than our budgets, and we need to bring that into line. And because of this big discrepancy, because we're overtaxed, there's money in the budget to satisfy what we need to do as a city and still cut taxes. The other has to do with public safety. Our murder rate has doubled over the last six years. Went from 114 back in 2014 to 254 last year, and apparently is running even higher than that for the first quarter of this year. And we need to do something about that. Someone in the council talked about defunding the police. I'm talking about refunding the police because we need to expand the police force. We also need to take the handcuffs off the police and up our game. Our police are not as efficient now as they were six years ago because we've changed the rules they have to operate under. And last but not least, we need to stop the rhetoric on the council about how awful the police are. Last year, a total of four police officers actually fired their weapon. Out of 3,000, only four of them fired their weapon at someone. It resulted in one death and three wounded, and all of those were justified shootings. They were being attacked by someone who was armed. And we need to calm that rhetoric down. The council needs to be supportive of the police instead of dismissive because that rhetoric is causing people to distrust the police. It is affecting our hiring because nobody wants to be a police officer anymore, and we need to put a stop to that. So that's what I'm about. I have other issues, but those are the big two. So thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go into our questions. And as a reminder, each of you will have one minute to respond to these questions, and we'll continue with our sequence. So candidate number two on the ballot, Mr. Bolonger Chapman, you will be up first. So the first question is about budgeting. One of the main responsibilities of the city council is approving the city's budget. With a revenue shortfall expected due to COVID-19 and continuing residual impacts from the October 2019 tornado, how will you approach what is expected to be a very difficult budget process?
Oh, the first thing that I want to mention is that because of the Objective Key and Results Plan and the No New Revenue Tax Plan, we were able to, not we, I'm not on the council just yet, but the council and working with the city managers were able to continue on making a budget for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 projected that do meet the qualified, do meet all of the necessary budget items that the city needs to run without taking much of a hit as far as revenue or excess revenue that we've been used to in the past before the pandemic. And so I think we're in a good shape, honestly. As I look at the commissioner's report, I think we're in a good shape as far as considering how the budget will look in terms of its effect by the pandemic. We're in good shape. We don't need to worry about not having enough money. We need to be smart about spending the money that we do have, making sure that we allocate those funds to the places that they need to be, for instance, public safety, infrastructure, considering that the pandemic did take a toll here. Also, making sure that public safety, as far as transportation, is taken care of because a lot more people are going to have to use it because of the pandemic right now. Looking for houses, connecting communities, those things are important. And so making sure that the money that is budgeted towards our infrastructure that are, so that our people in communities can stay connected and stay somewhat employed, staying active in our community, those are the important things. And so making sure that the budget continues to keep money towards those two things, but public safety and infrastructure will be a priority for me.
Thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis. And you're on mute.
You know, Jeff, when it comes to budgeting this year, there we'll know in a couple of months exactly where we are. And of course, public safety and infrastructure are very important. I'm always a proponent of looking at our items and determining, are we using our taxpayers' dollars the most efficiently? Does something need to be sunsetted? Does something better allocate with the county or with another organization, maybe a nonprofit? And how we continually develop our relationships to know where those are? But I think the bigger issue is that we've had an influx of federal money coming in through the government to address COVID. In fact, as a commissioner on the CDC, I helped recommend where some of that CARES money went. But I think we need to think about the transition of when that money starts to leave us. We have our regular tax base and how we replace that flush money that has come in with where new funds are going to come from. And this is why I'm such a proponent of growing the tax base. With only 15% of our tax base represented under I-30, it presents tremendous opportunity and will help us in that transition as federal dollars go away and as we can start growing this other part of our community that really helps us lift the community as a whole.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Burke.
Yes, thank you. I'm a firm believer that we don't have a revenue problem in Dallas. We have a spending problem, and government should live within its means. I have the experience to provide strong leadership to hold the line on taxes. We should be, we should be living within our means. Cities across the state are showing that they can operate effectively somewhere between the No New Revenue Tax Rate and below the voter-approved tax rate limits. And the city of Dallas can and should live responsibly within these boundaries. We have a lot of waste, and that's something, you know, when you chair the credit committee of a bank, you learn to see good deals and you learn to see bad deals. And we have a, we have a problem in Dallas, and there are multiple examples, and I hope we, of wasteful spending, and I hope we have opportunity to address those further in this forum.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
You know, candidates like to talk about what they'll do in the first 100 days of their administration. And to me, the job of the city council in the first 100 days is to scrub the budget between the election and September when they approve it. Because like Mr. Burke says, we don't have a budget problem. We have a spending problem. We, we are already overtaxing our citizens, and we need to find money to refund the police department, but we also need to reduce the tax budget. What I want to do is to freeze our spending levels at what they were last year, at least freeze the amount of money we get from property taxes, and we can live within that budget. But what it's going to involve is, is our present budget is, the city budget is not transparent. You can see what you spend, but you don't really know what you get. And we're going to have to lay that out and compare it to the 2015 budget, which was leaner by about 25%, and see where we've been packing on the spending and find places where we're doing things that don't absolutely have to be done. If we could do without them in 2015, we can do without them today. So that's, that's the focus I'm going to have. The other is to lay our budget out against Houston and San Antonio because they get by with less money than we have and see what do we do that they don't do? And that's going to give us indicators of where we can cut spending. But we need to do, we got two top priorities. One is to stop this overspending, and the other is to refund the police. The city of Houston has an interesting ordinance, and that is that they, the city charter says they can't increase spending by more than the increase in population, the percentage, and the cost of living index. And that keeps the city's budget from outgrowing our budget. And the city's budget's been outgrowing our budget for at least 10 years. So that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. And Mr. Moore.
Even with all the events that happened during 2020, this year's budget even increased slightly by about half a percentage point over last. And so with that steady growth, I don't think that we're going to be running the risk of ever being underfunded. So there's two issues up for debate, and that's how we get our income moving forward, how we can manipulate that tax rate, but then also how we spend the money. And when I went over last year's budget, I noticed a really bad trend of when we have an increase in our income coming in, we proportionally allocate that to the programs that we already have. And I'm going to be a really big proponent of encouraging council to return to our department budgets with a more critical eye and correct for those potential inefficiencies instead of continuing to proportionally increase current expense line items on an annual basis. Because when we identify those opportunities to maximize the impact of our tax dollars, it provides us a lot more flexibility in the event that we do have to make cuts in the future in similar economic crisis without having to tax our residents when they're already hurting.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next question, we'll start with, continuing with our ballot order sequence. It'll be Ms. Donnell Willis, and this is about public safety. I think, as everybody is aware, the largest portion of our city's budget is dedicated to public safety. What do you think is the most effective and fiscally responsible strategy to improve public safety for the residents of District 13? And do you think public safety is funded at the correct level? Or would you seek to either increase or decrease the funding allocated to public safety?
Well, first of all, I think a lot of people think with all the rhetoric that went around last year that we cut that, our budget, the overtime budget was cut, but we actually added $11 million to the public safety budget. So I think we have some amazing, exciting news in the arrival of our new chief, Garcia. I was on a call with him last week, and I definitely agree with the direction he is going. He is very much a proponent of 21st century policing. This involves community policing, where there is a less adversarial relationship in many communities, and it's more working together. Police will tell you, they don't solve crimes. Communities solve crimes, but they won't come forward to help the police unless they feel like they're truly, you know, not in an adversarial role. So I think that initially will help solve crime and will begin to deter crime. You know, public safety is more than just police. It is also about some low-tech things that we can do, and we are doing. Some of the money that was diverted is going into categories that are still in the realm of helping us be safer. Sometimes it's as simple as lighting. I'm a proponent of the Right CARES program that doesn't send people to jail if they need drug or alcohol or mental health intervention. It sends them to a residential treatment, someplace where they can actually get on a path to a more self-sustaining life. But I would say that we, the recruitment that Chief Garcia expressed that is about to kick in when he's able to travel and kickstart that again, we need to be sure that we can fund that. We also need to be thoughtful in what the KPMG study recommended with regard to allowing our watches to overlap and having some flexibility in that to just really bring some business principles into the principle of our public safety, and that is being very smart about how we deploy our officers into our neighborhoods. And if we are doing this for our community as a whole, it's good for D-13. And I think that though we had a high murder rate this year and D-13 was, you know, fortunate that we don't experience as much of that, it's still very concerning, and it feels like a violation to all citizens when that's happening anywhere in the city. So I would say by really supporting our new chief and his endeavors, it's going to be good for the district and for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Burke.
Yes, thank you. So Chief Garcia is off to a great start. He's focused on hotspots, and that's exactly what he needs to be doing. I am absolutely a proponent of more police officers. I'm delighted to have earned the endorsement of the Dallas Police Association. And I'm thinking back to Chief David Kunkel, who, under his tenure, he had 3,600 officers at that time, and he was able to bring the crime rate down by double digits. He had enough officers, we have 2,800 officers today. He had 3,600 officers. He had enough officers to focus on prevention, and we don't have that today. He brought the crime rate down by double digits. He had great relations between the police and minority communities and great morale within the department. We can get there again. We're going to have to make the investment. We're going to have to hire the officers, and we're going to have to pay them to keep them. And we're doing that now. We're doing more of that now. We just have to focus on retention. I fully support Lynn McBee and Bob Mong at UNT are behind the new regional training facility. It's going to be almost without cost to the taxpayers of Dallas. It'll be a regional training facility, a brand-new facility that will be, will be able to turn it into a revenue producer for the city of Dallas. So it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility on that campus. And looking at the existing Police Academy, which is, which is, you know, in very, very poor condition. We will have the tools to become the best police department in the United States. And that's what we deserve in Dallas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Smith.
Well, there are a lot of things we need to do to remedy this problem. One of them is to rebuild the police force. We have dwindled from 3,500, 3,600 officers down to around 3,000 today. And we certainly need to do that. The other is, we talked a lot about 20th, 21st century policing. That was rolled out by, basically by the Obama administration back in 2015. And since that time, crime has gone steadily up, murders have gone steadily up. And something about that is not working. This idea of kinder and gentler policing is not paying dividends for us. We talk a lot about Black Lives Matter. To me, we need to improve our policing and save some black lives because we're, we've lost a lot of. Last year, there were 140 extra lives lost over what, what happened in 2014 and about two thirds of them were, were black lives. You know, we need to have some respect for the, for the community that has to endure all this crime and start doing something about it. I think that the idea that police are oppressive is largely a matter of, of the rhetoric that people hear from the council and from the media and the political agitators who do that for political gain. You know, we need to, to be supportive of the police. And certainly we need to make sure that our citizens, whatever their color, have no reason to be afraid of the police. But I, I think that largely that is just a matter of perception we put in people's minds. I think in terms of.
Sorry to interrupt, I think we, we just heard the bell.
Okay, sorry.
Thank, thanks very much. Next up is Mr. Moore.
It sounds like we're all in agreement on hiring being a very big focus of rebuilding our police department. And retention is going to be based, of course, with first rate pay and adequate training and good benefits. But something we can also do as council members in communities is to give a strong sense of support to our officers. And that's going to involve people being involved and feeling like they're part of this process. I'm a subcommittee member on the Community Police Oversight Board and I want to rebuild this idea that oversight and accountability aren't bad things. They're a way for people to get involved. They're an opportunity for people to see all the hard work and all the really dangerous and split second decisions that people are having to make and really have a better understanding and become advocates for the police. But also understanding that there is not one size fits all in all of our communities. We've got Crime Watch neighborhoods that have really decreased crime. We've got Code Enforcement over in Vic, Vicry Meadow that's reduced crime by 75%. And we need to be working on joint projects with the districts next to us so that the west of our district is in a neighborhood that doesn't breed hopelessness and crime that supports the citizens.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boon J. Chapman, you'll wrap up this question.
Awesome. I agree with my opponents here in the sense that we need to support our, our DPD and the things that they have going. I also think that it's important that we highlight the great activities and the great mitigations that they have and implemented in the past years. For instance, the Real Action and the Real Change Programs have really started to give the results that it is that we're asking for from our DPD. Their transitioning responsibility, which is something that Gaydon Ellis talked about, utilizing more of our community to mitigate situations with our DPD so that we don't have to put everyone in jail. We can let someone who's intoxicated sleep it off in a community or residential type sleep off tank versus being arrested and sent to, and having to be processed. And, and also this is, this is clogging up our, our officer's ability to patrol the streets and actually stop the murders and rapes and hardcore crimes that are going, happening outside in our city. It's important that we continue to highlight the important things that they're doing as far as infrastructure. There's money being allocated to make sure that vacant lots and old structures that aren't being used are revamped and are used for city services that we can, that we can use in instances like, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next question, we'll start with Mr. Burke. And it's on homelessness and housing security, which as you all know, homelessness and housing security continues to be a challenge for our city. And oftentimes, instead of a comprehensive solution, the strategy seems to be simply to relocate homeless encampments. What's your strategy to resolve the city's challenges here?
This is, this has been an enormous challenge for a thousand years or more. Big cities suffer with this, small towns suffer. It is something that we have to continue to fight and fight hard. Twenty, I believe 20% of our residents in Dallas are living in poverty and someone can lose their job and, and unfortunately end up homeless and we know that. So, you know, I, I feel, and I was on a call recently with Daniel Robey and the work that the Austin Street Center is doing and the Bridge. These are wonderful organizations. And one of the things that we're hearing is, you know, it's not enough to count, count the numbers. We have to be focused on transitioning these folks into stable housing opportunities and, and determining what we can do to find stable employment, to lift them out of this situation, which many times can be temporary. And then on the mental health side, we have to deliver the, the help that they need. And, and so many of our organizations are doing that. We have to find the funds, we do have budget constraints, of course, in our city budget. But we have to, we have to continue to push for public and private initiatives and get our corporate partners to, to increase their efforts to help with this, with this problem. So anyway, I will be doing everything I can on the council to, to address homelessness in our city.
Thank you very much. I think we're having some technical difficulties on the bell. And Mr. Smith, you're up now.
All right. I'm, I'm running on the idea that I'm going to give you a choice and not an echo. And I have different opinions about homelessness than, than some do. I think some people are homeless because of circumstance, because they've lost a job, a divorce, sickness or something like that. And certainly we need to be compassionate and trying to help those people get temporarily housed while they get out of that situation. There's a hardcore to homelessness now, though, that it's responsible for the tents you see popping up and that sort of thing. And I don't necessarily have an objection to tents, they are low cost housing. But when they become, when the people that are in them become abusive, when they are drunk in public, when they're using the restroom on the sidewalk, when they're blocking people's doorways, they're being very aggressive and hand handling, you have to do something about that. If you let that go, you wind up like Seattle. And there's an interesting video called Seattle is dying. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, you need to Google that and watch it and see where that goes if you don't confront it. And the police are the first line to confront it. And we need to, to arrest people who are, are lost in drugs and, and what have you. To me, the simple way to, to deal with. That was the bell, it's finally working, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Moore.
Very importantly, the 2017 bond program's Proposition J provided $20 million to fund housing facilities for homeless. Almost all these funds are still unissued. And so we need our Housing and Homelessness Solutions Committee to work with the Office of Homeless Solutions and other advisory bodies to finalize those project plans and finally commit these funds toward implementation. Further, we've got ongoing collaborations with local organizations that will allow us to expand our services. This includes the Rapid Re-Housing Program with Metro Dallas Homeless Alliance. We can expand shelter capacity with Bridge Homeless Recovery Center and help families gain self-sufficiency that is provided by City Square and Family Gateway. But one of the interesting things that I've seen, there are a lot of unused properties and a lot of people without roofs over their heads. And I see a connection here. We have Dawson State Jail Building on Commerce that's been vacant since 2013. It's got rooms available, it has availability to serve food and give healthcare. And this sounds like a really obvious solution, but we're not taking advantage of those things.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Boon J. Chapman.
I'd like to continue the sentiment of Mr. Moore in saying that yes, we have to continue to seek out those opportunities that we have available and, and, and use them and not just use them, but stay committed to using them. And it's simple, just getting out there and talking with the people who have the resources. We, Mr. Burke also alluded to working with our business partners in our neighborhoods. Miss, Miss Gaydon Ellis is the champion of our neighborhoods. Working in, and we already have these networks already going. So continuing the conversation, not letting it get off the table, number one, is, is something that we have to do. It's too easy to say we're going to address it and then we just don't. The second part is that this is a systemic issue that has to be addressed at not just its, its, its obvious core, but we got to talk about education. These people who, they're not just mentally ill people who are homeless. There are people who choose this lifestyle. And so we've got to make sure that we are on the education front, making sure that we equip our students who will become workers with all the tools that they can so that they can be very resourceful and have the jobs that they can stay off the streets.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Donnell Willis.
Well, I know that programs have been touched on and I'm very proud to have been Jennifer Gates' appointee to the Community Development Commission that helped deploy $20 million, federal dollars into the community around housing issues, around home repair for not only rental but homeowner properties to help people age in place and not be forced out of their homes because of the economics. But as a volunteer in our community of Interfaith Housing, where I worked with a single mother who was just looking for stable employment and housing and hearing firsthand each week when I went to work with her about the impact of transportation and being so far away from her job, about childcare expense, et cetera. It's not just about drugs and alcohol or a mental health issue. It is about the whole picture. And so these are all issues that we need to look at. Certainly as a council person, I would come in knowing firsthand about these things from the stories and the people I have helped move from one scenario to another. But when you want to talk specifics, in, in D-13, we've got the St. Jude Center on Forest Lane that has been converted to be supportive housing and it's seen great success. The Thousand Unit Challenge that Chad West has championed to be able to, you know, open it up to developers and take city land and say, give us a transportation oriented development. But really the parameters are, are not there. You, you tell us what you think would work best. So I'm, I'm definitely behind that.
Thank you very much. All right, our next question, we'll start with Mr. Smith. And this is on Vicry Meadow. As District 13 is one of the wealthiest districts in the city, but it also contains a sometimes overlooked area of Vicry Meadow. Councilmember Jennifer Gates has prioritized improvements to this area, appointing a Vicry Meadow Steering Committee and a new public library branch in Vicry Meadow is now open. However, a lot of work remains to be done in this area. What are your thoughts on the future of Vicry Meadow? And how do you balance the rights and needs of current residents with the desires of property owners and developers?
Well, I think Vicry Meadows is, in a sense, a real treasure in this district in that it has such a variety of nationalities and personalities that all seem to be getting along together. And, and part of that is because it is what Vicry Meadows is, affordable housing. People that can't afford high priced housing tend to congregate there and it's a wonderful mix of folks. And I know a person who lives there. He says that everybody seems to get along together and he feels quite safe there. I think there are things can be done to improve. The things the city can do is to, to improve the sidewalks and lighting and perhaps some kind of a bike trail to get people from there up to the dark station where they can access public transportation. I think that we need to be very careful about redevelopment because what redevelopment does is improve the value of that property and force people out. This person I know was living in some apartments down around Abrams and North West Highway and that was bought and then redeveloped into a shopping center. So he had to go find other houses. Fortunately, he was able to find some that were less affordable, still affordable for him in Vicry Meadow.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, next up is Mr. Moore.
Going forward, I definitely want to be an ally to the team of individuals who have been working together to make Vicry Meadow even better for decades. A lot of people don't know that most of the land east of 75 in District 13 is part of a public improvement district where the property owners there have voluntarily decided to pay a special property tax assessment and it's earmarked to go straight back into their communities. And I mentioned earlier, they've started programs that have reduced crime in the area by 75%. They've got plans to connect their public transportation stations at Park Lane to their trails, the Sopec Trail, the White Rock Creek Trail, the parks that are nearby and to widen their sidewalks and make it a more wa- walkable and bikeable community. And we've aided it as the city council by doing things like the Tax Increment Financing District, where we redevelop and then put that raise in property taxes back into the community. But we got to make sure that we're maximizing that by not putting tax exempt property in the middle of that district. And going forward, we've got to work with the stakeholders to make sure that we are accomplishing that goal together.
Thank you. Mr. Boon J. Chapman.
Um, as Max Smith mentioned earlier, this Vicry Meadow area is full. It's a, it's a great area for diversity. I actually get my pizza from here in this area. There's a local Domino's and I love going over there to get my pizza, thin crust, that's the way to go. But when I go over there, I see constituents all the time. It's actually a place that is getting a lot of new structures. Like for instance, we just got the new Vicry Meadow Public Library and it's great. It looks, it's a great structure, but it needs beautifying still, more signage. I could see more sidewalks getting to it. I could see more, more, more landscaping to make it look as nice as it does over on the, on the west side in the central part of our district. I think making sure that that area looks as well as the rest of District 13 will continue to make it as inviting as it actually is. There's a misconception around that area because there are lots of multifamily type units and, and things of that sort that may make it seem a little bit less downtrodden than the rest of our district. But it's a fantastic area and I think we need to definitely continue to develop it so that we can make sure that it stays viable in the district.
Thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis.
Well, I see two key issues here and I must first say I'm a DISD mom. My son is a senior in high school at Conrad High School in Vicry Meadow and I've been involved in some kind of volunteer capacity since the late 90s there. So of course we've got an affordable housing issue. Right now, it is affordable housing and sometimes it's dressed up on the outside and it's not so nice on the inside. There are real issues to contend with there. And so when you look at the public improvement district plans, it's all that you would want, wide sidewalks and lighting and, you know, mixed income housing. But how do we retain that without pushing out the people who are there now and keep that diversity, but also allow the mixed income residential so that you can have your police and your fire and your teachers and your administrative staff able to live in the heart of the city without forcing out the community that's there now. I've also seen that the people there don't really have a good, well, they haven't until the Vicry Park Library is about to open, a sense of community. You've got some disparate communities placed there by Catholic charities. I mean, people who are refugees. So bringing together people in a way that other neighborhoods in the district enjoy through Crime Watch or neighborhood associations is something that neighborhood very much needs. And so I'm very pleased that the library will give them a place to do that.
Thank you. And Mr. Burke, you'll wrap up this question.
Thank you. So a- as you may know, we have a, a population of about 30,000 immigrants living in Vicry Meadow. And I've been, I've been honored to help support an organization there called Hart House, which provides after school programs to those immigrant, immigrant children and, and summer programs. It's a wonderful organization, there are many of the, of them like that in Vicry Meadow. The, the, the challenge is that we have an existing stock of affordable housing. And under the city's new, under the city's relatively new affordable housing program, the, it will be very difficult to build new product there that will, that will provide economic housing that is similar to what's there today. It will be much more expensive under the area median income formulas that exist today. I'm the only candidate in this race who has actually made a deal with the city to provide affordable housing. And so I know how that sausage is made and it's a very difficult challenge. There is a way to do it though, and we do it through incentives. And if we provide the right incentives, we can provide new quality affordable housing in that area. But it's going to take some cool heads to sit down and come up with that new plan to do it. And I think I'm very well suited to do that.
Thank you very much. At this point, since we're running low on time, if you've ever attended a candidate forum with me, you know I like to have some lightning round questions to try to get some additional information. So all of these will be 10 seconds or less to answer. And we'll start with, back with Mr. Moore. What's your favorite restaurant in District 13?
I think the first restaurant I went to is Original House of Pancakes and I'll keep going back to that one, it's, it's great.
Great. Mr. Boon J. Chapman, favorite restaurant in D-13?
Enchiladas on Greenville.
Outstanding. Ms. Donnell Willis.
Texas BBQ and Burger. Best barbecue in D-13.
Mr. Burke?
New House Cafe in Preston Royal.
New House Cafe in Preston Royal.
And Mr. Smith?
Old Phoenix on Forest Lane. They have a wonderful chimichanga. Try it sometime.
All right, some outstanding recommendations here. Next question, and we'll start with Mr. Boonage Chapman. What's your favorite park in District 13? And you're on mute.
There we go. My favorite park, I, I'm actually not an outdoors person. I hate bugs and so I try to stay in the house as much as I can. I'm a video game. So my best park would be anyone that you could create on a video game.
Great. Ms. Donnell Willis, favorite park in the district?
Well, Preston Hollow Park is the park where I was park liaison for several neighborhood groups and have brought some improvements to it. So I know it backward and forward and it's where my children would go and play and, you know, play soccer and ride, ride the different swing set and things like that. So that's, that's my favorite.
Mr. Burke, same question.
I want to say Preston Hollow Park, but I have to give a shout out to, to a park. I was at a grand opening this morning at Bachman Lake Park and they've just gotten a $15 million deal done to build the new Aquatics Center over there. It's just to the west of District 13, but it's really exciting and it's going to be a great asset for everyone who lives in the area.
Great. Mr. Smith?
Well, it isn't a park exactly, but I, I like the North Haven Trail. It runs right alongside my property. I live at the corner of the North Haven Trail and Joe's Creek. So there's a sign in the yard. If you come by, I will stop by and say hello, but that would have to be my favorite.
And North Haven Trail is in fact a city park. So that's a, that's a very good answer. And Mr. Moore?
Mac took my answer, so I'll go ahead and say how excited I am that we're going to be going over 75 with New Haven Trail and we can get to the Harrius Moss Park, which is so huge and has so much to offer.
Thank you all. Next question, and this one will start with Ms. Donnell Willis. Do you have a library card? And if so, what branch of the Dallas Public Library do you use most often?
Well, I most frequently use Preston. Yes, I have a library card and I use Preston Royal and have used that since my children were small, but Vicry Park has a special card all their own. And so I need to ask Mary Walonsky if I'm allowed to go and get another card that's a special Vicry Park designed card.
Mary, you can answer that in the chat. Mr. Burke, same question.
Yes, I, as I mentioned earlier, I've been, I've lived in the district for 59 years and spent many a days at the Preston Royal Branch. And so that, that's a beautiful building and I just remember those days. And I would also look forward to getting a card at the new, at the new Vicry Meadow. I think that's just going to be wonderful for that area.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question.
I have a library card if it hasn't expired, but I'm an engineer and I don't read a lot of things other than technical stuff. When I do, I resort to Project Gutenberg. It is a wonderful resource for stuff that was published before 1929 and all the classic literature is on it and there's more to read there than you could ever hope for. My wife checks things out typically online. If I use the library, I typically go downtown because it is a much bigger library and has a lot more resources.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore?
I had a library card when I was at SMU, but since 2010 and approximately 10 to 12 different moves, it's been misplaced in the meantime. But I think it's easy to say that I'll be seeing at least a few of these guys at Vicry Meadow when it opens.
Thank you. And Mr. Boonage Chapman, same question.
Hi, I said I do not have a library card, but I do work in a school with a library that I do, me and my husband actually frequent. We like to read together and so I do use the, I utilize our school library here.
Great, thank you. Our next question, again in the lightning round, we'll start with Mr. Burke. This one, I think we'll give 30 seconds to because it's a little bit more involved. But there's been some discussion at the state legislature of moving municipal elections to November to coincide with state and federal ones. Do you think municipal elections should be moved or should they stay in May?
I absolutely think they should be moved because we have such low voter turnout and I really just don't see a problem with that. I think if we can coordinate and bring them all together in that way, I think it's just, it's, it's an avenue to increase voter turnout and have better representation ultimately. So I would, I would support that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I have a very different view than Mr. Burke does. I think that we need to move the judicial elections to the same date as the municipal elections. We have a, we have a huge ballot that's very hard for people to, to inform themselves about all the candidates in the regular general election. And as a consequence, most people just go in and they either hit the top three or four and walk away or they, they just do a straight party line vote down, have no more idea than a goose what candidates are about. And I think that judicial candidates at least deserve more attention than that. They're not supposed to be partisan, even though they do run a partisan way. And I think we would benefit from that extra attention that we could give them if they were in a smaller election. I think the fact that there's a low turnout helps underfunded candidates like myself to, to reach the spectrum of voters that you might, might be looking for. So hopefully those voters are more committed to, to the city and more thoughtful about their vote.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, same question.
Well, I disagree a little bit with Mac. I'm going door to door and talking to all the voters, so I hope that they turn out. I would like everyone to vote and so if it makes it easier for them to come out in November when they come out to vote in record numbers from 2020, then I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Boonage Chapman?
I 100% believe that moving them to November would be a great thing because it is the anticipated time for elections and that's when our constituents have their ear to the ground about, about elections. And so I think it's lucrative and smart so that it's in the wheelhouse for everybody. So I 100% agree that moving the elections would be a beneficial move.
And Ms. Donnell Willis, you'll wrap up this question.
Sure. Well, you know, D-13 has a highly engaged voter base, so we don't have as many problems with that. However, if you look across the city as a whole, we need the city as a whole to be more engaged and moving it to November would definitely bring that out. My concern would be that those down-ballot elections don't get as much attention and it does make it harder for some of the local candidates. But if the trade-off is more people are voting and engaging with their community, then that would be a good thing.
Thank you. Last lightning round question because we're running up on our time here, but we'll start with Mr. Smith. Name one individual endorsement of a District 13 resident or business that you are particularly proud to have received.
Other than friends, I don't really have any endorsements, but I haven't sought them either. So that just leaves me out of this question. I'll pass to someone else.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
I've got a precinct chair endorsement and she's an all-star. Her name is Audrey and she works almost as hard as I do, I think. And so I, I love it when they're not only endorsing me, but they're also helping me get out the boat.
Thank you. Mr. Boonage Chapman?
It's, it's hard to pin them down. I, I like Mr. Moore. I've been putting my, my feet to the ground and I get to meet a lot of constituents and I have endorsements from a lot of community members. One in particular, her name is Natalia F. Frost and she's a precinct chair and she is amazing person who I met through this process. And, and, and meeting her, I've also met a lot of, a lot of other people who are just wanting to be active and local in the community. And it's a beautiful thing. And so I really appreciate her for connecting me to those people. Hope she's here watching. Hi. And so that's my biggest endorsement. I'm so proud.
Thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis?
Well, I can't call out one precinct chair only, so I'm pleased to have the support of many precinct chairs. But I'm going to go to a friend and someone I really respect and that's Lauren Law. She's a Just With mom. She's a very involved crime watch leader, neighborhood leader. She was doing so much legwork on our extended neighborhood patrol. And when I moved in, I partnered with her to help get that off the ground and make it a reality. And so I, I respect her and appreciate how dedicated she is as a neighbor and the fact that she's supporting me means a lot.
Thank you. And Mr. Burke?
Thank you. I, I think the, in terms of an organization, receiving the endorsement of the Dallas Police Association, I would consider the top organizational endorsement because they know what I've been doing for the last 25 years in my community and where my heart is. But I'm, I'm also delighted to have the Firefighters Association and former Mayor Tom Leopard and former First Lady of Dallas, Mickey Rawlings has endorsed me. So I have some great organizations, including the Real Estate Council and the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas and the Metrotex Association of Greater Dallas. So I, it's hard for me and I've got a number of community leaders as well. But I'd say the top one would be the, would be the fire, the Dallas Police Association.
Thank you very much. All right, we are at one o'clock, so we're going to go over just a little bit, but I do want to give each candidate an opportunity to close. So we'll start back at the beginning with Mr. Moore. You'll have one minute to close us out. And I do encourage all the candidates to put your information, your websites, any information you'd like to share with our attendees in the chat. Mr. Moore?
Like I said at the beginning, people have been asking for options from our district and I think that we have delivered with very different visions for District 13 and how we all plan to realize them. So now it's up to all of you. Do you want a person with the most signs or the most ideas? Someone who's going to give you explanations for why things are too hard, difficult to solve? Or someone with a commitment to finding a new way to get to the finish line? Are you happy with quick temporary fixes or trust that a person that's excited about the complexities can get a solution that will last for years to come? We have almost 60,000 people registered to vote in District 13. 45,000 of you went to the polls last November, so just go do that again. That way we'll know how to best represent the entire district instead of just the 14,000 people who show up every other year. I've loved getting to know so many people over the last few months, but it's not over yet. We've got a lot of time between now and Election Day, so go to moreforDallas.com and email me, call me, keep asking questions, come out and knock on doors. I would be thrilled to have you join us.
Thank you. Mr. Boonage Chapman?
I want to thank you all for being here and for listening. I hope you, at this time, as we've gone this far in this, I hope that some of the words I've said have resonated with you. And I hope that you'll check out my website, www.dvcforDallas.com to learn more about me and my vision for Dallas. I want to say that no matter the profession, everyone passes through a teacher's classroom. And I, I absolutely know the extreme pressure that teachers are under to produce students who are always ready for the circumstances that life bring them. I'm ready. My skills have been honed through my craft and you know that the extraordinary skills teachers put up every day to make sure our community is great. I want to take that same skill and passion from my classroom and put it into the community and work on the city council. I know that I'm well, well, well-received with the people I work with because I am a person who works as a team. I know that that's something that's very important, working on a big city council like Dallas. I understand people dynamics and how to make sure that we prioritize listening as a way to make things happen on that council. And I want to make sure that we, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donnell Willis?
Yes, I want to represent you as your D-13 city council member because I'm an experienced, effective leader. I have served on boards and commissions. I have business experience both at the small business level and at the corporate level, working on Fortune 50 brands for a global ad firm. So I know about performance and accountability. And I also have been serving the community as a lifelong volunteer. One of the most important things that a council person can bring is the ability to build consensus because you can have all the great ideas in the world, but if you can't get others to agree with you, you're not going to go anywhere, which means Dallas isn't going to go anywhere. I'm open to other voices and ideas. I welcome them. I want to understand the concerns and motivations of my other, my fellow council members so we can move the city forward. I can also represent you on every vote. I won't need to excuse myself. I want to be your voice at City Hall and you'll find that with me. I really would love to have your support. You can go to gaydonellwillis.com. I'd love to hear from you and look forward to having your vote on April 19th and on Election Day, May 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Thank you. As I said earlier, I have a big heart for Dallas. I've been here my entire life. I've built some great businesses here. I know my way around City Hall. I will, I will get to work on day one. We've got to tackle affordable housing. It is an enormous issue throughout our city. It's really a regional issue, but we've, we've just got to get some good policy in place to get it done. I'm the only candidate that has negotiated a deal to deliver affordable housing in the heart of District 13. That is very important to me. I have been busy in the community my entire life, as I said, representing my president of my homeowners association, my crime patrol association. I know our officers. They know me. They know where my heart is. I will work day one to begin rebuilding our police department because I know we can get there. We were there once before and we should be the safest city with the best police department in the United States and we can get there. I will work hard to devote the resources that we need and I'm just delighted to have the opportunity to be here today. We, we, we need the, the business experience on the city council. As we move past COVID, we've got some big challenges ahead. And I think I'm really, with the budget and finance experience, I feel that I'm the best suited to do it. So again, thank you to the chamber and all of your partners for hosting this today. And if you want more information on my vision or why I'm in this race, please go to lelandburke.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith, close us out.
Thank you. Well, as I mentioned, I'm an engineer. I look for practical solutions to problems. You may not think about it, but 45% of the city's budget is public works and I have some special expertise there. But I'm here to offer you a choice. I'm here to stop the city from reaching its hand ever deeper into your pocket in the form of ever rising taxes. I want to, to make our police department a lot bigger and more effective. And I have some ideas to do that. Lastly, we need to challenge this ever-growing homeless problem. Part of it is to, to accommodate the homeless. The other part is to let them know that homeless encampments and that sort of thing are not, not acceptable. We didn't have those five years ago. For some reason we do now. We're not really less prosperous now than we were then. There's no reason we have to put, put up with that. The solution to homelessness is work and sobriety for, for the hardcore homeless. But if you want, I admit it is not really long enough to talk about a lot of these problems. If you want details on it, visit my website. It's maxsmith413.com, maxsmith413.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith, and thank you to all of our candidates for appearing today. Terrific job by all of you and thank you so much for your willingness to serve our city in this important role. District 13, I anticipate, will probably have one of the highest turnouts again in this election. And I appreciate everything you all are doing to help get the vote out. Thanks to our cosponsors on this forum, the Dallas Breakfast Group, Friends of Dallas Public Library, Faith Commons and, and the Legal Women Voters, of course. How could I forget y'all? Please join us again for our next forum on Wednesday, April 14th at noon, which will be Dallas City Council District 11. I posted a link to sign up for that in the chat. We'll also be co-hosting several other forums with other groups, including Dallas City Council District 6 and Dallas City Council District 2, co-hosting those with the Hotel Association in North Texas and the Stevens Avenue Business Quarter. Watch for emails with information on those. And then finally, Richardson Independent School District Trustee Forum, Place 7, on Saturday, April 17th, 10:45. More details on that to follow. Thank you again. Visit ndcc.org for more information on all of these and thank you to all of our candidates and we are adjourned.